Can you guys hear me? Maggie, can you hear us? I can. Yeah. Yeah.
Then we're good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, December 2 of 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Alberhaski.
Here.
Gribovich.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Stahlnecker.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
All right. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. First agenda item is approval or discussion of minutes from last meeting.
I would like to make a motion to approve with one caveat. I was not here, I believe.
Nor was I.
Nor was I. And on item three, or bullet three on the minutes, there was the motion, or excuse me, two at the bottom, the motions to setting the public hearing for the two items today. We were both listed as saying ayes for that, but we weren't here, so. As Watkins. As Watkins, yeah.
Okay, we have some people missing, so we'll take a look and correct those minutes.
Otherwise, I would make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion would carry with changes. Is there any public comment tonight for anything that's not on the agenda? There will be time to speak for anything on the agenda. I don't see any takers, so. I think the, we have Maggie on line participating in the meeting, and she has to abstain from the first two agenda items in old business, so I propose that we change the agenda order and do new business first so that she can participate, and then she would abstain for the two following. So I'm looking for a motion and a second for changing the agenda order.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. We couldn't hear. I could not hear the motion.
Okay, we're just changing the agenda item. We're going to do new business first and then old business after? Okay, thank you. We, where were we? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, that carries. So we are going to move on to new business to start with, agenda item four, and it's the Arbor Sixth Edition Final Platte, and I think Michelle will have this tonight.
I do, thank you. The Arbor Sixth Edition is located north of West Viking Road, west of Hudson Road, west of Amber Valley Road, and south of Fernwood Drive. In looking at the final platte, staff looks at if the platte is compliance with the preliminary platte. The final platte shows 21 residential lots and a tract for the right-of-way. The preliminary platte shows 22 lots. The applicant stated the reduction of a lot is based on the market demand, making the lots south of Amber Valley Road a little wider. This minor change does not create any new impacts or increase the density. Staff considers this reduction to be a minor modification that does not raise any other issues. The summing of the final platte is consistent with the preliminary platte with the layout and the circulation of the streets, the establishment of required easements, consistency with the zoning requirements, including setbacks in lot sizes as shown in the preliminary platte, and the stormwater detention system will be collected and end in tract A in the Arbor's Fourth Edition. With that, staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Okay. Is the petitioner here tonight like to speak to this item? All right. Anyone from the public like to speak to this item? Okay. Bring it back to commission for any further discussion or a motion?
Looks pretty straightforward. I'd make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
Alberhaski.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
All right, that motion carries. That ends the new business of the meeting, and we move on to old business. Maggie, are you abstaining from these items?
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right, she will be abstaining. I'm assuming she will check out on the Zoom. And we will go to old business, number two, amendments to the future land use map. And Michelle, I know, has this.
I do. There's two applications that we're going to be presenting together, which is the land use amendment map for West Fork Crossing and their rezoning request. The property, the subject property is located north of West 22nd Street and east of West Union Road. There's also a portion of this property for a map use amendment that is on the southeast corner of the intersection of West 27th Street and Union Road. The applicant, what, the applicant has the property to the north that has been preliminary plotted for West Fork Crossing, and this was not included in that development at the time because it was not able to be seared easily. The city, Sinston, has done a tapping district, and sewer is available to the south next to the high school. Last time I went through all the details of what's being proposed, tonight I'm going to speak more general for the land use amendment request. They're proposing, sorry, as mentioned before, the land use map amendment is not based on the legal description, it's just an exhibit in our comprehensive plan. And they're proposing to change approximately 10 acres located on West 22nd, sorry, 27th Street from medium-density residential to neighborhood commercial and mixed use. They also propose to reduce the greenways and floodplain areas to the neighborhood commercial and mixed use and low-density residential, as shown on the screen, and amend the plan to indicate the locations of the proposed park with designation of Park and Rack. As mentioned earlier, they also are proposing to reduce the amount of land designated as neighborhood commercial and mixed use at the southeast corner of Union and West 27th Street, changing it to medium-density. This will result in a no net increase in the amount of neighborhood commercial in this general area and no net loss in medium-density residential as well. So when we're looking at the criteria for land use and map amendment, we're looking at what the descriptions are in the comprehensive plan. Number one, in the yellow, is low-density, and this is emphasizing single-family detached development. Number two is medium-density residential use, emphasizing mixed-use housing types, including multifamily development, single-family detached, single-family attached, and townhomes uses with density ranging from four to 12 units. Neighborhood commercial and mixed use emphasizes the range of low-impact commercial uses that provide a variety of neighborhood services. And four is the area for greenway and floodplain open space, emphasizing preserving environmental sensitive areas and critical scenic corridors and possible incorporating into the trail system or stormwater management. And looking at the proposal, in area number one, the low-density residential use reduce, reduction of the greenway and the floodplain. This area is no longer in the FEMA map for floodway, and staff supports this modification. In the medium-density residential, the applicant proposes to achieve the medium-density as shown in the map with a mixed use of housing types. Number three is the neighborhood commercial and mixed use, and this area would be suitable for commercial since it's next to the new high school and a large new development to the north. And I will add to this in the next slide. And then number four is the greenway and floodplain open space, and this area is to remain as needed for the proposed park and stormwater using the national natural storm drainage on the property. Excuse me. And then, as I mentioned, the neighborhood, neighborhood commercial mixed use, this area to the, that's labeled two, and is proposed to be reduced to medium-density residential. As part of the development, the comprehensive plan of 2012, the consultant used the citywide commercial industrial land use need projection study to determine the amount of land to determine the designated future of commercial residential industrial areas. The 2012 comprehensive plan stated that the commercial growth is important for our community's overall economic development strategy, and is important to correctly anticipate land needs for the commercial retail activities. While too little commercial land can limit growth, designated too much commercial land can produce inefficient land use patterns, scattered development, restrict other land uses, and require customers to travel around town. For this reason, simply increasing the amount of commercial following the request to add neighborhood commercial and expansion of West Fork subdivision along West 20th Street could be problematic. A comprehensive plan would be needed. An alternative to this is considering an equal amount of neighborhood commercial mixed use designation on the property, the southeast corner of Union and West 27th Street. Staff does not see this area could support that much commercial development. Staff supports this proposal to keep the balance of commercial and residential uses as proposed in the 2012 comprehensive plan. As you may recall, the property owner, Tom Dengart, attended the last meeting, and staff met with him that week, and he has no objections to this proposal. So the next request is to rezone the area for West Fork Crossing.
I just want to maybe stop because we do have to take a vote on each one of these. I would just ask the chair, if you would like to have her continue to talk about the rezoning, or would you like to stop and, and consider the, the comprehensive plan amendment and take a vote at this time? Or would you like to do it all at the end? You'll need to take two votes.
Two separate votes. Does anyone want to discuss it now, or do you want to just keep, let's? Yeah, let's move on to the next, the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. So the rezoning request is rezoning A1 area to RP Residential Plan Development and C1 Commercial District. There's three criteria when looking at rezoning, and is there access to public services? As mentioned already, there's sewer connection thanks to the 27th tapping fee area. There's going to be adequate access to street network with connecting to the north R1 zoning property that connects to Union, and there'll be two connections on 27th Street, and then it'll also be an internal connection to the high school. And if the land use map amendment is approved, then we, then we find that the proposal meets the comprehensive plan as well. In the RP Residential Plan zoning district, it does require a master plan. Oops. Wrong screen. The master plan, staff had asked applicants to show the undeveloped area of entire holdings, and that is what is shown in the master plan. The purple area is the R1 zoning district, and it was preliminary plotted that was approved in 2021 and amended in 2023. The connections and phasing between the two developments are important and to the overall discussion, but with this discussion and this proposal, we're only going to be focusing on the area that's being rezoned, which is the area in pink and yellow. So in the master plan, they're proposing the use to be a mix of townhouses, multi-family and single-family detached dwellings. The street network, as mentioned before, will be a modified grid, and it will also be reviewed in more detail during the preliminary platte. The setbacks being proposed is the 25 feet in the front, 20 on the corner for corner lots, five feet on the side, and 30 on the rear. As mentioned, the FEMA maps have been revised in this area, removing the floodplain in 2024, and the environmental report of part of the preliminary platte will be required to show if there's any other sensitive areas. This development has designated to use the existing drainage on the property, and this area that will be rezoned is looking at having most of the water go to two basins proposed on West 27th Street, and there are the stormwater management areas to be on track B, C, and D. The applicant proposes for this area to have a 2.6 acre park for the RP development, and that will be combined with the already designated R1 preliminary platte park to be a total of five acre park. This also will be reevaluated at the preliminary platte. This development also incorporates larger sidewalks for trails going through the subdivision and surrounding areas, and then there's also a proposal of a trail from the park to 27th Street. The trail to, overall, there is a proposal for the trail to have connection from Robertson Dresser Sports Complex to the high school. In looking at the master plan, we also look at the critical connections in the phasing plan. The applicant proposes this area to be developed at 10 phases, and we want to make sure the critical connections occur to support good traffic, circulation, and development as it gets built out. The critical connections that have been designated in this development is having a north-south connection. Sorry, I forget, the east-west connection, that's already been complete. And then there's the second connection will be the north-south connection, connecting Yale Parkway through Vale Avenue to the 27th Street. This third one will be extending Cross Creek Drive from Waterberry Drive to West 27th Street, and the final one will be east-west connection along Tamara Drive connecting to the high school. With all that, staff makes the connecting to the high school. With all that, staff makes the recommendation for the land use map amendment, recommending approve, making, recommending approval based on the exhibit, the two exhibits discussed earlier. And then I can pause here and have another slide for the other recommendation, if you like, or I can move forward.
You can move forward. That's thing.
And then staff also recommends the rezoning, subject to a signed development procedures agreement finalized before the public hearing at city council. And the development agreement will have a requirement of site plans for the proposed multifamily and townhome dwellings to be reviewed by you and city council, providing no direct access to West 27th, and agreement to provide cost share for necessary improvements along 20, West 27th Street. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Does commission have any questions for staff on this?
Because I do have one, so with just the, and I did miss last meeting, I apologize. But so the park acres in this development, and it's going to be met with the park acres, and they already approved R1. Did you discuss the last meeting what that works out with the new metric that was established?
Right now, it looks like it will meet, but we'll be able to determine that with better, more, more exact information with the preliminary plat.
But it's looking pretty close.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Is the petitioner here tonight like to speak to this at all?
Kevin Fittro with Money Pit, here to answer questions, but nothing specifically. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and, and Michelle did a great job presenting it, so.
All right, thank you much. Is anyone from the public here that would like to come up and speak to this item? Any questions?
Chair's in the way. There, yeah.
Hi, Steve. My name is Ron McLoughlin, and I own a piece of property that's probably pretty well adjacent to that. And Ms. Paisley, I didn't understand one single word you said. I didn't understand anything. So I'm glad you all had it in writing because I did not. But I got most of what I learned off of the prompter.
Okay.
Overhead there. But I, I would like to know some time parameters on some of this stuff. We have heard nothing of any of that. Is it going to, is this over a five-year, 10-year, 15, 50-year, or is this imminent within a year or so? We haven't heard any of that.
Okay, is there any more questions?
That's it.
Okay.
I would like, I would like some time parameters.
Okay.
Put on some of this.
Okay. I'm sure the developer could come up and answer that.
Pardon?
The developer can come up and answer that question for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The developer is here?
Yes, yes.
Is this the developer here?
Yes.
He had his back turned to me, and I couldn't hear anything you said because it was directed that way. Did I speak to him?
Yeah, would you come up to the mic to speak, please? Otherwise, this doesn't go on the record.
Michelle, can you put the RP, or the RP plat up there that shows the streets?
Do you want that one, or the other?
Oops.
This one. So the development will start within the year, next year.
And you are who?
Kevin Fittro with Money, I'm with the development company.
Oh, you're with the Brent Dallstraw?
Yep, yep. Development along 27th with the commercial, and then along the west boundary.
I don't have any trees there, so I don't have any real.
I guess the easiest way to explain it would be, we're going to start within the year.
Okay.
But this whole plat will take the course of 10 to 15 years.
It will.
Yep.
Is this?
But it'll, it'll be constant development.
Is this in, associated with phase one of the, of what you are, you built?
Yes.
Is part of that, so that southern area?
That's.
Is along West 27th Street?
That's starting in the next year.
Okay.
Yep. And then we'll move along the west boundary, along the west side.
Oh, yeah.
The left side.
Yeah.
We'll go all the way up to.
Little, like, small lots or?
Yep.
President.
Yep, those will go all the way up to Wild Horse Drive that's currently there.
Oh, really?
Yes. And then we'll move, we'll move east over time.
I didn't really get that off of my render.
Yep, then we'll move east over time.
Okay.
Towards the high school.
Maybe I can speak to you.
You bet. You bet. Yep.
All right, thank you very much for answering that. Any more questions from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to commission for discussion and motion. I'm good with this. I, the amendments to the, the land, land use map, and I, I like the rezoning. I'm in support of having some pocket commercial in, in residential areas. I think that makes a lot of sense, so I'm, I'm behind this.
Yeah, consolidating the commercial makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So any further discussion or looking for a motion? We need to approve agenda item two, the future land use map, and also number three, the, the rezoning.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the future land use map. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Otherwise, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Alberhusky.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now, agenda item three, the rezoning of the property from A1 to RP Plan Residential. Any further discussion or looking for a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Alberhusky.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnecker.
Aye.
Okay. That will then move on to council as soon as we have a development agreement that's.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that concludes agenda items tonight. Is there any commission updates?
No, but I would like to ask, just make sure we have a quorum for the next meeting. I know it gets awfully close to the holidays, but the next meeting would be December 17th. Just to show hands to see if we have a quorum for the 17th. Is that a one?
Not looking strong right now.
Seventeenth? Hold on.
Let's see if, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's still not a quorum.
And we can check and see if Maggie can join as well. One, two, three, four.
We have four.
If we have Maggie, we'll have five. So Maureen, no. And, okay, so, all right, so maybe we have five. We'll check with Maggie.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, that concludes our meeting tonight. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks.